Good evening. Welcome to our Mount Cora Valley History District for Education Meeting. Dr. Salerno, this meeting is a property certification. Roll call. Joel.
I'm here.
Leah.
Here.
Jessica.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Emma.
Here.
Jack.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
Carly.
Here.
And myself.
Here.
Can we stand on the same clip? (inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd love to hear your read the mission statement.
I will read it. The Mount Cora Valley School District is in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging fall students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
All right, thank you, Joel. Item two A, we've got the agenda that's out there. Any discussion about the agenda, otherwise accept the motion to move this forward.
Motion to approve the agenda? Second?
Motion by Jessica and a second by Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next up is our regular closed session minutes from October 13th. We entertain a motion on that as well.
Motion to approve? Second?
Motion by Jessica and a second by Carly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Dr. Salerno, any citizen comments tonight?
I didn't see any tonight, no.
Okay. Our school news section.
What was it?
Should I have our students?
That would be terrific.
Like to introduce Andrew Aaronson. You have Jack Schulteck back for round number two, first on the full board. Gentlemen, do you have any news you'd like to bring us today from a student perspective?
A couple of things, I think. We have a musical coming up in just a couple of weeks, so Mary Poppins musical. Oh, I think we just got done with marching season in band, so just got done with that. I hear we also won the football game, so last Friday, so can't think of much else.
Girls volleyball, unfortunately lost to Edgewood this weekend, being close to their season, which is a little unfortunate. The NHS fundraiser for the Ronald McDonald House is also going to be going live shortly, so if you see news about that and want to donate, that would be fantastic. More information to come.
Is it okay if we take a minute? So we, a couple of us have to meet you, but if maybe it can take a minute, have you just introduce yourselves to the others who didn't get a chance to meet you and maybe tell us a little about yourselves?
Hi, guys, I'm Andrew Aaronson, I'm a junior, and I work at Culvers, maybe some of you guys have noticed me there. And I'm just really happy to be here, guys.
I love what you aspire to do. Would you tell everyone what you'd like to do in your post-high school studies?
Oh, my post-high school studies. So I'm thinking of going into cybersecurity as a job, probably starting a two-year, then going into a four-year, so I think that'll be a really cool opportunity.
You've got it connected with Bill Bruggen out here.
He'll be the transfer boss.
Definitely.
Job security.
Join the black hats, right? Break everybody's system so they, thanks and thanks.
I think I know everybody here, but I'm Jack. I served on the Safety Bonus Committee last year, and I'm still on it this year and on the full board.
Wonderful, thanks. Glad to have both of you here on the full board. Dr. Salerno, do you have some additional stuff?
Just one real quick announcement. I'm pleased to tell you that Channel 27 News was out here today, and they were looking at our welding program as part of the foundation, for foundation grant that we received. Want to give a tip of the hat to our entire CTE department, but especially our team in the ag department. They have done wonders in procuring additional dollars in order to get us welding equipment that, quite frankly, I think many colleges would like to have, and this only adds to it. So they were here, it sounds like five o'clock tomorrow morning, quite early, or set your DVRs, whichever you choose to see that performance.
Any other school news reports, any of the board members?
I'll just mention, I was able to attend the sextortion presentation last Thursday. It was very informative. I think a couple of key takeaways would include, just keep an eye on what your children are doing, the best you can, and know if they get in a situation like that, to tell them it's not, in your discussions, to tell them it's not their fault. I think that was one of the key takeaways. Just look out for them.
Thanks.
And it'll be a growing problem, especially with AI, so they'll find more ways to take advantage of the young, unfortunately.
Sounds like it'd be a good turnout for that one.
I'd say probably about sixteen, seventeen people were there. Thank you for those who are interested. There are some great slides that I think if parents wanted to just know what is out there, we'd be happy to push that out, give it to them on the fourth weekend.
Excellent. Any other contributions for school news? Excellent, thanks, everyone. To item four, personnel transactions. Have the attachment to Dr. Salerno, anything of note?
Just that there is an event of this evening, please.
Do you approve personnel transactions?
Sir?
Got a motion from Joel, a second from Jessica. They're trying to check it against it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Onto our consent agenda, four items there, look forward, a motion to pass. Consent agenda, listen, anything needs to be pulled out?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Tom and a second by Carly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Onto our discussion items. These are the committee and village liaison member reports. First up, education, Jessica.
Yeah, we met on Monday, October 6th, and the bulk of our meeting time was Craig Smith talking about school to career and the IB program updates, and he was here at our last meeting, so didn't get to hear as deep of a dive, but we got to hear the updates. So that was a great presentation and opportunity for us to ask questions. And then we spent some time talking about policy seven fifty-four, use of privately-owned vehicles, that'll come to the full board next month. And we had three grading and assessment updates, and a security workers update, and we'll be again on the front there.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Jessica? Do you have any community coalition news?
We meet tomorrow.
Oh, all right. All right, that sounds good. And to close that out, Village of Mount Cora liaison report, there's not been much direct school impact. The zoning code rewrite is getting closer to completion, and the planning commission meeting on Wednesday to renew that full draft. And Dr. Salerno, if it's worth bringing up also brave spokes that are, if you want to save that for our main event.
Happy to share that. In fact, tonight, Bray will be presenting to one of the planning commission meetings with the support of point of viewings around our proposal for safe traffic walkways to schools for each year at the early, well, primary, primary sector. So that's the first step, and then we have a couple of other follow-up meetings with them. November 17th, I believe, is when we have our next meeting. Happy to keep your promise of that.
Great, thank you. It was just on to six B, long-range facility planning. This would be Ryan Sands from Bray, Dave Reed, Scott and Emma, and Mr. Salerno.
Mr. President, I told Ryan to come onto the line about 6:45. We're so efficient today, just to do that so fast. If we need to remind Sarah about standing report?
Absolutely, thank you so much. Yeah, Sarah Straka, we have a series of reports, number of students receiving industry-recognized credentials and professional certificates. We have students completing a workplace learning experience and number of work-based learning partnerships within the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we know we want to graduate life long-term, so we want students to have opportunity in high school to experience maybe what they experienced outside of high school. And we have three areas that we look at to get us there. The first one that Adam mentioned is the number of students receiving some type of credential or professional certificate. And we've been tracking these over time, and you can see, over the past two years, we've got quite a bump in the number of students who are receiving these certain, about six different types of certifications. Want to point out two tonight, the CNA program. Craig Murray thinks has talked about our CNA program a little bit, potentially to Mount Cora, and Craig Smith may talk about that with you all, too. Really looking to bring that program in-house and having a space for students to practice those skills with certified nurse, I think, Mount Cora House. So that's something that's into works, and we'll see that number go up as the years go on. And the second piece is that firefighter one and two, we've seen zero there for this year. We weren't able to recruit enough students between ourselves and other school districts, we needed a minimum of twelve to run it locally. So we'll be looking for, to recruit students next year, so maybe just maybe like every other type of year piece, and we'll get the students interested moving forward, because we know our committee does need those qualified firefighters. Those are those two areas, but we can see overall totals are one hundred and seventy-two for this last school year, so that's a great, great number for credentialing. The next piece, sorry, ASK. I can scroll down a little bit further. It provides the definition or description for each.
You don't want to be just singing the praises again of our CTE department and our Director of Instruction.
CTE department, definitely.
Hundred and seventy, yeah, Sarah's got it. Hundred and seventy-two students participating last year, the highest you can see in the trajectory, but then also the fewer number of students we have in our high schools sometimes. So I really applaud you guys for making this happen.
Yeah, the CTE team does a really nice job of marketing and sharing what's available to students. And we probably have a Craig Smith here as our CTE coordinator, so she's going to go on and on and on, opportunities for kids. So that investment, we can see paid off, yes, going to continue to pay off as we look at numbers in the future years.
Do we have any success stories from students that have gotten some of our stuff, as to what they've done with it?
We could get some.
I think that would be really, from a marketing standpoint, but also from a curiosity standpoint.
Yeah.
I know what they are, but what have students been able to learn from them?
Yeah, I know, I know Craig does like to collect those stories, whether it's through IB stories, I think he should review all last board meeting, but we can definitely get some of these success stories, because I know students do go into the fields that they're looking at. I think one great success story this year is we have a gentleman who is filling in for one of our nurses, who was part of the firefighter program, got his registered nurse degree, and now he's back in our school, so I don't know. So we just have these interesting stories, and they come back, which is what we want as well. Thank you, Steve. Okay, the next piece is all of our work programs, and we have three different types to offer, but we highlighted throughout the years, the work experience, and the work co-op, which we see a little less of, and because we have a growing wide age with the partnership program. So within page two and page three, just defining those a little bit more. But we can see, as I said, the work experience program has gone up and down, and then it is going back up, because youth of friendship may not fit all kids' needs. There's certain criteria you have to meet, and that may just not work for all kids, but we know kids do need experience getting up to the workforce. So we have seen those numbers go up to nine students this past school year. And then we do have our work transitions program, typically eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one-year-olds that are working in the community as well. With our Y-A program, we see the numbers increase over time. Just hold on a little bit more to figure one, please. Well, we can look at this table as well, but we see our Y-A numbers growing over time, just within the twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five school year increase of ten. And we know we have interest, that interest is growing, again, we just need partners. And we are getting the word out also to get those partnerships, and we have tried some unique pathways to garner more interest, and that's still going to be a role, again, as we have Craig Smith now here. I'll need to see the Y-A numbers last year went up, and they're about around there this year as well. So that is need to see if kids have, having that opportunity to have that four hundred and fifty hours of experience with the mentor in a field that they may or decide they have want to go into, and that's okay as well. There's that figure showing up at the time, just need to see.
Four fifty caught my eye, I kind of forgot how many hours it was in, that's a big commitment.
It's a big commitment, yes. Sometimes students are able to finish it in one year, this new year, but some kids are spreading out over two years. Yeah, it is, it's good to spread out more, especially for sports or other things.
Yeah.
And then we have a breakdown as well, just trying to get the more diverse population of students into this program. So we will, we will keep that in, and it's on our radar, so we may look at it further. Speaking of partnerships, then, that's our last piece, connected with Jody Baker, who has been tracking the number of partnerships on a platform called Job Ready. Near, near at the end of the bottom, did put some numbers that she has a hundred and forty partnerships documented, which is a huge increase from previous school years. We had the twenty-five or twenty-six, and twenty-two, twenty-three, and then thirty-one, and twenty-three, twenty-four. So again, just getting these catalogs, we know who to reach out to, contacts are, what their focus is, to continue to build those experiences for students. Again, it's just that strong network piece, everyone working together, everyone needs to know about all the programs that we have to offer, especially for students to know what we have.
Excellent, thanks, Sarah. Any questions from this group? There's one thing I was wondering, what, if you have this offhand, what are some examples of those work experience jobs that don't fall into the youth premise?
I'm trying to think of a good example off the top of my head. Sometimes, I can't think of one right now, but I know sometimes there's certain applicant or certain positions that don't fit in that needs mold of Y-A, so for example, for a while, but now it's in there, the child care study, or teacher study wasn't in there. Also, that would be an example of work experience, but now there's a youth partnership pipeline for that. So that would be an example.
Good.
Is there? I mean, I know we've grown those partnerships tremendously, and that's great. I looked at this last year for bringing an internal to my office, and there really wasn't a lot of, like, there's nothing for me to go look at.
Sure.
To say this is what's required of the employer. I'm sure it's there somewhere, but getting that out in front as much as we can would be greatly helpful.
Yeah.
So.
That like in the employee section?
Yeah, just so they could go and look at it, so.
That would, I'll share that.
And the only reason it didn't work is it didn't fit into the student's schedule.
Sorry.
But she's still in my office, so.
Okay.
I just don't have to do anything for it.
Yeah, the Job Ready W, that sounds like a major help in terms of tracking, and the thing that caught my eye there, too, was the potential for Silver Court crossover. What's, where does that tie in?
I haven't done anything yet.
Okay.
That, that, Principal Uncle's three yard.
Yeah.
That made transition to that yet.
Okay. That'd be another tracking system, though, essentially.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, would be.
Last thought, are there, are there any identified barriers with getting, like you mentioned, a more diverse group of kids involved in that? Is there anything that we're working on or exploring in particular?
I'm trying to think, I mean, credit-wise, credit shouldn't be too much of a barrier for students to receive credit for the pressure. I don't, I don't know what it could be yet.
It'd be interesting to look at, like, those different categories within each of the different types of jobs that they're, you know, they're, like agriculture versus healthcare versus, to see what those look like per job type.
That's something I guess that's just meant to, as to how we think the team works. I know Jody Baker works on that piece, too, to have as many students understand the opportunities there.
Yeah. And we always have our hand in, it's not easy to identify specific things, I was more curious than anything.
I mean, I can see transportation, right? Like, if they don't have a car, and it's not within walking distance here in town, then that might be, it's not like we have public transport or anything, or taxi services or anything like that, so.
Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions? Thanks for the, yeah, thanks for the detailed report, it was just actual active information. Thanks, Sarah. How are we doing?
I'm fine.
All right. Fantastic, let's welcome aboard, capital planning update.
Hi there, Ryan, how are you tonight? Oh, I better turn this off, so just going to quickly start our recording, put this on our district's website for families who are interested in catching this a little later. Can you hear us okay?
I can, can you hear me okay?
I sure can, it's great to see you again. And we have one of our board members with us tonight, we're eager to hear about all the great things happening in our new construction project.
Great, well, thank you for having me, appreciate it. So in our schedule, we're on track, we're approaching the end of our construction documents phase, and in the next couple of months, and then prepping the documents to go out to bid, we're also in the process of our general contractor pre-qualification. And then, as we've been planning, we'll be going out to bid in January of 2026. From a design schedule standpoint, as you can see, we're getting towards the tail of the construction documents, so we're finalizing, so coordination with engineers, finalizing coordination with the village, getting into more regular conversations around the construction phasing, finalizing all of our products, and like I said, we'll be prepping that bid package to go out right away in January of 26. Our staff engagement has slowed down, because we are essentially, you're done with design and really in the throes of the documentation, so much of our staff engagement has wrapped up as we're in the ends of the construction document phase. We did meet recently, I think it was the week after the last port update in late September, with the district admin principals and other building leaders to discuss all the planters and other options for potential additional safety measures at all the buildings, so that was a productive conversation. We've also continued engagement with Paul Christensen and middle school leadership, along with the district team, as we finalize the renovation scope for the smaller middle Specific to the primary center, we just hit our seventy-five percent construction document benchmark, so that's really more of an internal coordination and progress benchmark, it's a set of documents that we provide to the district team as well for review and feedback. As you can see from these two examples, compared to the color-coded conceptual plans that we started with back in early 2025, we've got a ton more detail on the floor plans, and then we've gotten into the leads on the details for how the building will be put together as well. So we're on track from a construction document standpoint, like I mentioned, what we're looking at in the schedule. We're also getting through the general contractor pre-qualification process, so we issued an RFQ for those qualifications on September 23rd. It was sent out to a list of contractors that we had collectively identified with the district team, and it was also advertised publicly, so we had some additional interest through that process as well. The statement of qualifications from interested general contractors were due on October 21st. We had eleven that were interested, and we sent the RFQ to, and we received ninety submittals back, which is great. And you can see some screenshots of the RFQ document there on the right. And those submitted statements of qualifications are under review by the Building, Grounds, and Transportation Committee, so they met a little earlier and are continuing to do their due diligence, and once the list of pre-qualified general contractors is established, we will include that list in our specifications when we issue them for bid, so that interested subcontractors, product vendors, and others that are interested in bidding to the general contractors will know who those pre-qualified companies are. We've also continued to engage with the Village of Mount Cora. So actually, this evening, there was a public works committee meeting on which we had a petition for variance submitted on the agenda. That variance was related to driveway width, so because the primary center property is currently zoned residential, as all your school buildings are, and under additional use permit, the residential zoning limits driveway width to twenty-four feet, because we are looking to accommodate our bus traffic going in and out of our new bus drop-off lane, we submitted a petition for variance to be able to widen that driveway to thirty-two feet to provide better turning radius and access for the buses. So that was on the agenda for this evening, and our civil engineer was in attendance to support that effort. With relation to the plan commission, we presented preliminarily to both the Historic Preservation Commission and Plan Commission on July 23rd. We've submitted our formal supplemental for the design review, conditional use permit, and certified survey map process. That certified survey map was something that the village had requested to combine the current primary center and ELC sites into a single property as part of this project, so all of that is underway, and will be on the plan commission agenda on November 19th for all of those submittals. We've also met with the real staff a few different times to have conversations regarding different aspects of the final site design. We've also been coordinating with multiple village departments, the village administrator, the planning department, public safety, a number of entities specifically regarding the phased construction, and some of the different temporary conditions that we'll be working through during that time period, specifically looking at making sure we have a good solution for student pickup and drop-off in our interim scenario during construction, looking at options for accommodating staff parking, and multiple pathways to the building and around the site for safety. So those conversations are ongoing, but the village has been a good partner through all of this, and helping to come up with options and facilitate those conversations. And we appreciate that, and we'll continue to coordinate with them as we finalize what those solutions are. Hopefully, you've seen the October progress report that went out, exciting to share some additional renderings with the community of the primary center project. Those are always the most fun things, I think, as community members, to see the 3D images of what the finished project will look like, and we look forward to sharing more in subsequent progress reports. As we wrap up, next steps, our construction document phase is continuing through December, wrapping up the detailing of the construction and spaces, like you saw on the examples there earlier in the presentation. Excuse me, we're further defining the construction phasing, like I mentioned, so that's something that we will include in our construction documents and specifications to identify we will include in our construction documents and specifications to identify the phasing that we've agreed upon with the district team and in coordination with Principal Johnson so that the bidders know the expectations for when different portions of the product can be constructed. And we'll define that through both drawings and verbal, or I should say written, schedules within those bid documents. We're continuing to engage with engineers and consultants, and this is really when they get into the weeds of their work, once the design is done and they can finalize the engineering, we can coordinate all of that together. And then we're finalizing the project specifications. So those define things like the specific products and manufacturers that are acceptable for different aspects of the project, define the finishes and things that have been selected over the course of design. And they also define the quality warranty and other types of expectations for all the different aspects of the project, as well as define the instructions for the bidders and all the bidding information, the schedule, like I mentioned, and all the different aspects of the project as we report. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from the board this evening.
Thanks, Ryan, for the update as always. As far as the timeline goes, are we still feeling really good about our schedule as far as everything is spent moving forward?
We are, yeah. Internally, I think we feel good about where we're at. We had a 50% QA QC review about a month or so ago. That was a good effort and we're on track there. And like I said, doing some coordination with the village and the district team to finalize the construction phasing will be kind of the remaining piece that we want to button up as we wrap up our construction documents over the next two months.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else with questions for me?
Keep up the good work.
Yeah. Thanks for coming out tonight, too. And I know you're feeling under the weather, battling through, so we appreciate it.
I appreciate the flexibility to be virtual. Thanks, everyone. All right. Have a great evening, everyone.
All right. See you, Ryan. Excellent. We will now move on to our action items. 7A, adoption of our revised budget for '25, '26, referred by the finance committee. Scott Deillon.
Hi, everybody. Well, first of all, thank you for your flexibility because if you're looking for somebody that needed a board meeting on the fourth Monday, I'll call over. I'm that person. So thanks. Every year we do that, I know, but every year it's a, it's a flexing people's schedule. So thanks for being here. So the finance committee met last Monday and we, as you've seen this, usually three times a year, we do what the revisions is needed. October is absolutely a requirement because just as a quick reminder, it takes about a third into our fiscal year before we finally find out how much money we'll give to the state of our grants. And so this is the format that's required by state law to post in the newspaper and have report approval. There is a drop at the bottom of the document, even though you'll see at the top it says the board approved this. I just wanted you to know what that would look like if you could send the newspaper. So we spent just under an hour at the finance committee going through line by line. So I don't plan on doing that, but certainly I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll point out, I think, a couple of pretty major items and we'll go from there. So there's three categories in the budget that we're looking to make revisions to, most notably in the, in the largest budget, of course, is our general fund. Most of the revisions here on the revenue and expenditure side have to do with our revenue limit data, which I'll talk about in a second, and then grant allocations. I'll start with grant allocation. So we had a number of federal grants back in the spring that we were planning on as we get every year, so this is title grants. When we got into the summer in preparation for the annual meeting, other than Title I, we pulled those title grants out of the budget because it didn't appear that they would be funded. Since August, we found out that they would be funded, so we're inserting that back in. But pretty small in terms of dollar amount, but nevertheless, that's an example of some federal grants that we're now planning on giving. Second item is we received a few new grants, as all of you know, most notably, I remember, the CAFS grant for just over $190,000. That is a federal grant. Certainly, we didn't plan to put that back in the fall, we had our fingers, back in the summer, we had our fingers crossed. But just recently, as you know, the district found out that it got to go over to that. So that is a federal grant that's being put into the general fund. But as you can imagine, right, we get grants to be able to invest dollars in the programming and capital equipment and so forth. So when we have revenues coming in for grants, right, we also have expenditures going out. We also had an AODA grant for $20,000. That AODA grant for $20,000. We have AODA grants for a number of years and then it went away. The district was awarded that just in the fall here, so that's also been included as a state grant. When it comes to revenue limits, remember revenue limits is about 90% of our revenue, and it's in the form of two sources, which is our tax levy and our general state aid. General state aid, money coming directly from the state. We don't find out that amount officially until October 15th. That's actually why we're here tonight. We need that dollar amount to be able to calculate our tax levy. And so these modifications here reflect those updates. So for state aid going into the annual meeting, you may recall, we planned for about a $1.3 million reduction. On October 14th, or October 15th, we found out that we were going to lose about an additional $130,000, so just over $1.4 million. That does have a direct impact on our tax levy. We saw most of that impact back at the annual meeting when we were planning for a levy that was going to be an increase of just under $2 million. With the additional reduction in state aid, again, I just found out about just over $130,000, that also has an impact on our, on our local levy. So the finance committee talked just briefly about the number of districts across the state that are also seeing reductions in state aid. Now, the state itself and its budget, remember, opted to not put any additional dollars into the state aid for now, so we're being flat. However, just over 300 school districts, so about 71% of school districts across the state are actually witnessing a reduction in their state aid, and that does have a direct impact then on the levy. And so that's important to note now. The other thing that we talked about briefly at the finance committee is about $350 million of the state aid potted at the state level is being allocated toward the voucher program. And so for us, in our revenue limit, it amounts to 700, I think it's 743,000, but I'll just say just over 740,000 of our revenue limit dollars are going toward the voucher program for this year. So we have to account for that change, that voucher increase, because it not only impacts our levy, money's coming in, but it's also money that that goes back out. Our aid is just. 700, just over 743,000. So those are kind of big picture items from the state budget, but sort of following back to our revisions. Again, the two, the two biggest areas is the levy and the aid, both on the revenue side, but then also on the expenditure side. An increase of just over 40,000 in our budget from the annual meeting and vouchers, and then our wonderful state federal grants that I just mentioned that we're accounting for here. As far as overall general fund balance, the budget is in balance. I'll point out, just as a quick reminder, back at the annual meeting, we had a $200,000 design operating deficit because we still have those federal funds waiting for our electric bus to come in. And so when we have more expenditures coming out, then the money we have coming in is a design deficit. But for our unassigned fund dollars, we're keeping our, our budget balanced. I'll pause right there, but I know a lot of you have heard this in the past. Well, while you're thinking, I'll move on to special education. Special education, similarly, when it comes to federal grants, we anticipated a 25% reduction in our federal grants for this school year, only to find out that we can put our, our planning at 100% again. So annual meeting, we are seeing a 25% reduction in special ed federal funding, and now we're putting it back to 100%. So this is accommodating that increase. There's also some accounting adjustments we needed to make because the GIA is changing some of our comp structures in terms of where we have to code different expenditures. So some of that is not anything operational, it's just a debit and credit thing. If you want more detail on that, I'm happy to talk to you about that. Remember, special education does not have a fund balance because remember, a deficit that school districts have at the end of the year is ultimately transferring to special education to make it whole for the year. And then last but not least, thanks, is our package and cooperative program fund, very small, not in terms of importance, but in terms of dollar amounts. And that is simply way back when we were thinking that we would be fiscal agent once again for our current permanent location grant. But we are working with some query for one additional year, which means our federal dollars will not come directly to us, they will be followed through some query. So it's just more of an accounting piece. And the fact that we won't be collecting money for him, the district does a fiscal agent, will just collect money for ourselves. Not a huge difference in terms of operations, but it's just in terms of where the money comes from. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. There are three motions tonight. The budget revisions are important because it's connected to the first motion, which is adding up all of our revenues for all of our funds, not just the three that we talked about, and then adding up all of the expenditures. Don't worry that expenditures are, you know, four to five million dollars or more than revenues. The most notable source is our referendum project. We're anticipating once the general contractor is hired around February time range and they really start dating toward the latter part of our fiscal year, we're going to start to see our expenditures pick up. But remember, the revenues, it's just the interest we're earning now, but the expenditures will be significant. Two, you know, 25 million of our 34 million will be borrowed, so that's why our expenditures are so much greater than revenues. But the budget revisions that we talked about are tied to the numbers there for the first motion. I'll pause right there.
Just quickly interrupt. First of all, thank you. Outstanding work as usual to turn all this around in such a quick, quick time, just as unreal, and your attention to detail is fabulous. Today, we booked our grant from CAFS and asked the team to meet as soon as tomorrow and begin expenditure of those dollars because they are federal dollars, they don't know how fast they're going to be pulled. You read the newspaper this morning, what's happening with SNAP benefits. Remember, firstly, really going to be a critical time for our families. So kudos to the team for assembling as quickly as tomorrow, seeing we can't start moving on to the grant, which by the way, was informed by the state review task force. They came to do such an important, such an important part. So with that, I'll hold it.
Can you in aggregate, what was the amount of federal money we were able to rebook based on the fact that they allowed those grants? Probably, and it doesn't have to be precise, but, because that's a direct levy offset, correct? Is that, I should ask, is that a fair statement?
Yeah. Getting it, it doesn't, it doesn't affect the levy, but what it, because the revenue limit is separate from the grants. But, but when we get a few additional title grants put back into our budget, 20, 30, 40, thousand.
Okay.
That's on the title side. On the federal special education side, we're at the 80 to 100,000 range. That's where the increase in special education categorical numbers that we are getting from the state help offset that.
Yeah, it's 70 to 80, so it's about.
It's between like 80 to 100,000.
Eighty to 100, yeah.
I said something, 80, 80, I have a.
I can't listen, so it's fine.
So I'll, I'll talk maybe about the levy in a second, or I can talk about the levy now before you consider the first motion.
I was just gonna say, I appreciated you going into detail on the state aid changes. Again, I know we talked about it in the finance, but I think it's important for everybody to hear, and I know we talked a little bit at the annual meeting about the shift of percentage of revenue that comes from the state versus property tax holders, and that's what this is clearly an even greater shift toward property tax that the state legislatures designed for us.
And to add to that, when it comes to the levy, the other thing to keep in mind is, you know, we have a referendum project going on, and last year our levy was about 4.2, just over 4.2 million. Of our, of our levy was tied specifically to our debt service, which is our high school referendum package, 17, and now this is one. This year, our referendum levy, which is part of the 22 million that you'll consider tonight, 4.4 million this year, so we're up about 159,000, 75,000. And that's in reflection of our new referendum. They didn't want that on us because it is tied to what makes up our levy, it's our general fund, our referendum.
Any other questions for Scott at this point? Yeah, I think I was gonna ask you, I thought it might be helpful to just run through all three and then go back over since they're all interrelated.
And as part of, can you remind me, is part of the levies prepayment of debt?
Very question. The last three year, well, not the last three years, well, the last three years. You actually had to deal with two levies last year, if you remember that, right? Depending, you know, come up with a referendum. So for the last few years, the district did purposely put an additional amount of money in the levy to help offset that cost, in other words, interest costs, which was amazing and fantastic that alone because we stayed a lot of interest out of that. But it also set us up really well with debt management going into our new referendum, going through our bond rating call with Moody's, being able to show that we premade that, show that we are solid enough to be able to do such a thing. Yeah, so that, did any answer?
But that's not part of the.
But that's not part of it.
Yeah.
Okay. So go through all three.
Nope, that didn't happen. I wanted to make sure.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Should I look at the second?
Yeah, we didn't talk through it all. You're out of it, it's good.
So the second motion is a modification to what our levy was at the annual meeting, but it pairs that to what the levy was a year ago. So you'll see that our levy, according to the revenue limit, this year would be 22,110,301 dollars. And you'll see that that's just over $2 million of an increase from last year's levy. And back at the annual meeting, we planned for just under $2 billion increase now, just over $2 million. And that's a result of that, that aid modification. In terms of the mill rate, not equalized value, it will be an increase from 824 to 846 back at the annual. Back at the annual meeting, we planned for 886, so another reduction there in our, in our mill rate from what we planned back in August. And then the third motion has to do with our fund balance, and you may recall, fund balance is not a stated accounting, it's an accounting measure that determines the financial health of your district, that's a percentage of expenditures, and this motion essentially just means that we use the funds from our fund balance, which cash is a part of, to make ends meet, to be able to pay our bills and have cash flow. So, these are, the numbers change, but the motions are basically the same that you've seen over here, of course, the numbers change.
Any questions, discussion or questions from this group? It's broader topic. Alright, well...
The only thing, I don't have a question, other than just to say that this is, it's $22 million, it's a lot, and I'm so grateful for the community that supports us through this and the referendums that we've done, so.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Carly. You have tremendous support in this community for our schools, so thanks for that. I would entertain a motion for 7A, the adoption of the revised budget, that one's just going to be a voice vote.
Motion to approve revenue budget totaling $49.16 million, I will say the whole lot in the middle, 49, 626 and 41, 49, 626,000, $41,000, and expenditure budget totaling $54,460,508, including all things, so, thank you.
Got a motion by Joel, and a second by Jessica, and I apologize, this one will be the roll call vote. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
You two don't have to get put on the spot. Tom?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Motion passes. And we also, if we can backtrack just once, for adoption of the revised budget, a motion on that.
Isn't that what we just...
That's what, that's what, okay, I apologize, this is all for the... Yes, now we're onto the tax levies that I'm tracking here. Would entertain a motion on this one as well.
Motion to approve a tax levy in the amount of $22,110,311 of the district for the approved budget of the 2025, '26 year.
Second.
Joel's a motion, Carly the second, this is a roll call vote. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Motion passes. And onto our third designation of fund equity.
You're doing a great job.
Okay, I will make a motion. To apply the projected $7,795,064.16, being 21.23% of the general fund expenditure budget, as the outside fund balance to meet cash flow needs.
Yes, let's, we'll go. Yes. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Motion passes. Thanks everyone. Scott, you might have your sticker on here.
Yes, we're up for the second meeting of our revisions to board policy 830.1 rental and use of the high school fine arts facilities referred from AGT. So, AGT met back in September, at their September meeting, to talk about a number of revisions that Kelly Turner in particular had suggested to us as a way to streamline people's ability to be able to reserve the fine art facility. He was kind enough to put in, invest a number of hours to create an outline application for people to be able to reserve the facility, and through discussion at BTP, it was pointed out that there was sort of, there was an AB and C section to the policy, but section B really got into the sort of the day-to-day, the basic rules of the operations. So, the thought was to remove that section B and make it an admin rig, not only to be able to make modifications based on what's needed at the high school, but also to reflect the idea that policy is policy, and more the day-to-day is an admin rig. There's a few subtle changes to the policy, but overall, it has to do with protecting the facility, making sure that people are taken care of when they rent the facility, working with Dave's Villages and Grounds team to ensure that, you know, the state is protected, and that, you know, that both the districts and the independent managers need to remain that. Yeah, I'll pause right there.
I know this is a secondary, but... Any considerations from this group? Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the series 800, 830-1 rental and use of the high school fine arts facility.
Got a motion by Tom, and a second by Jessica. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Thanks Scott. Dr. Swann, are you stepping in for this one?
Yes, after two board members, you may remember, Mr. Johnson was here recently to update the board regarding to our part-time positions, to reflect on what's in statute, we need some proposed changes. Got any questions you may have on this, I believe?
Please do me a attorney statement that's like copy and paste, it's there, won't be in the final.
No, I just wanted, I couldn't always remember what he was saying, so I just copied what he said.
I still, but I don't want to sit on myself.
Yeah, I'll take that out. Any thoughts or comments from this group?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Sarah, and a second by Jessica. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Dr. Swann, did we have any other citizen comments?
No. Sidearms.
We're grateful to our citizens who are here today.
Thanks.
Thank you. Excellent, and this point concludes our regularly scheduled business. We have coming up on meetings, as mentioned somewhat, education, our full board, next Monday already, on November 3rd, finance on November 10th, safety and wellness on the 17th, along with the full board meeting, and then buildings, grounds and transportation on Monday, November 24th, Thanksgiving.
Mr. President, if you don't mind me just letting the room know that at tonight's buildings, grounds and transportation, we elected to continue our dialogue on our general contractors, and so we will have a meeting this Thursday after meeting at 1:00 PM, I think is where we decided, so I just wanted to bring things up on that. Who's two for us to talk about here?
Thanks for mentioning that. At this point, I would have us consider contemplated closed session for section 19.851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee, if it was a governmental body that's a jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to whip, need and prefer update, and superintendent's evaluation and contract. Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to, I want a closed session.
Motion by Leah, and a second by Jessica, to a roll call vote. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.